Really skewered. They had a corpse with a little Democratic donkey in it. Was to be the death of the Democratic Party and me.
Wow, yeah, that's kind of aggressive.
Of the next seven presidential elections, the popular vote only went to the Republicans once. So anyway, I'm not going to start a political conversation here, so.
All right, and I just wanted to let you guys know we just spent live.
Okay, thank you very much. And it is six o'clock, so we're going to go ahead and call the meeting of the Bloomington Committee of the Whole to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thank you. Councilmember Mathie.
Here.
Councilmember Bolin.
Here.
Councilmember Milowonway.
Present.
Councilmember Emig.
Present.
Councilmember Painter.
Present.
Councilmember Correo.
Here.
Councilmember Black.
Here.
Councilmember Crable.
Here.
Councilmember Bray.
Here.
Mayor Renner.
I'm here. Thank you very much. And thank you all for attending under these circumstances. And we're going to first start with a COVID update by our distinguished city manager, Mr. Gleason. Tim, come on down. The price might not be right, but it's your show right now.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We have the COVID City Manager Update. And the items that I'm going to cover tonight are financial in nature. Still don't have a clear picture of what the impacts are going to be to the city. But we are projecting that we will have used 2 million of the 4 million cash reserves that we have above the GFOA minimum. And again, that's the Government Finance Officer Association recommended minimum for municipalities. And at the council meeting next week, Scott Rathbun, our Finance Director, will provide an update on that as Finance Director Monthly Report. But again, we still don't expect to have a clear picture of the impacts of March and April until June or July of this year. I think the community has noticed that the brush, bulk, and garbage crews with Public Works, there were about 60 employees that were split in half by design to preserve that workforce, you know, and to take an extra cautionary measure. Because again, like I've said many times in the past, if something would happen to that group of 60 employees, garbage becomes the disaster within the disaster, and we want to prevent that. But the crews are back at 100%. They have staggered starting shifts and trying to address the bulk brush and garbage pickup. Not garbage, but the brush and bulk pickup throughout the community, and they're doing a good job of trying to catch up. Also, with some of the stuff at state level out of Governor Prister, he has a stay-at-home order. Obviously, it's been extended through the month of May and have been asked many times, what is the police response? And we've talked about this before as well. When the police have some sort of shelter-at-home order violation, we respond. We always respond and have no other choice. But the pathway that we feel is best is to try to gain compliance while we're on the scene. And then we'll document that and forward it to the State's Attorney's Office. You know, there is that potential that, you know, there is noncompliance and we're forced to take action, but I don't think that's been the case up to this point. Also, another area that I wanted to share is just some of the decision-making here at the city level. As we're getting towards the end of this additional month of shelter-in-place or stay-at-home, we have to start considering, what does opening our city facilities look like? You know, one for the residents of the community, but also what's it look like for our city employees? Because it's not as simple as flipping a switch and we're back to normal like the day before COVID-19. Need to consider how we safely work and don't put this workforce in jeopardy. For the most part, we are nearly 100% functional on the home front with our employees. But definitely over the past two months, have seen some impact, but I think employees are doing a very good job. But those are some of the things under this COVID portion of the agenda. Wanted to share that we're working towards how do we reopen the facilities, not just for the residents, but also for the employees. Back to you, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Tim. Thanks for all you're doing. And obviously, this is a very difficult time. And I think a couple of council members mentioned to me that we need to do something to try to lighten your load and give you at least a day or two where you're not, your head isn't spinning around like Linda Blair on The Exorcist. So anyway, thank you so much. At this point, do we have public comment, Madam Clerk?
Mayor, we do not.
Okay, we're going to move then from public comment to our consent agenda. And I do want to note that I'm going to entertain a motion, if there is so, if there's one available, to approve items 5A and B, but not C, because the April 20 minutes do need to be forwarded to us. So is there a motion to approve, or perhaps amend, the minutes from the March 26th Committee of the Whole and then the April 13th meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Moved by a newly 30-year-old councilmember, Correo. Is there a second? Oh, come on, we can't. Oh, Donna Bolin. Oh, thank you, Donna. I thought I saw your hand. I'm taking that as a second. Okay, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll? Again, this is approval of the minutes under 5A and B, but not C.
Yes, Councilmember Mathie.
Yes.
Councilmember Bolin.
Yes.
Councilmember Milowonway.
Yes.
Councilmember Emig.
Yes.
Councilmember Painter.
Yes.
Councilmember Correo.
Yes.
Councilmember Black.
Yes.
Councilmember Crable.
Yes.
Councilmember Bray.
Yes.
Motion carried. There are no needs to announce, Madam Clerk. We move right along to item 6A. And that's our big presentation for the evening. And we have a presentation discussion of, oh, hold on to your hats, sanitary sewer assessment and maintenance. This is going to be riveting, I'm sure, as requested by the Public Works Department. And we have a up to 15-minute presentation by our Public Works Director, Kevin Cothee, and then up to a 30-minute council discussion. And I'm going to first turn this over to our city manager for preparatory remarks before Mr. Cothee. Mr. Gleason.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I am going to turn this over to Kevin Cothee, our Public Works Director, here in a minute. But like the mayor was commenting to, you feel the love on this topic. But this actually is an interesting presentation. This is a high-dollar piece of infrastructure for the city. It's very timely, given some of the heavy rains that we've had over the past couple, three or four weeks. And it also is very interesting. When we talk about our sanitary sewer, in a lot of cases, there's some sewer line that has served this community extremely well for 100-plus years. And while, you know, not one of these topics that we necessarily think is sexy, it is actually a very interesting topic. And then what Kevin's going to present could be an agenda item for next week seeking approval from council. Kevin?
Thank you, Tim, and thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm going to share my screen here, and hopefully this all works as planned here, so. I trust that you can all see my screen with my first slide here?
Yes.
Okay. Once again, thank you. And it is very timely that we have this presentation to inform everyone. I know that some of you have been on the council long enough. You've heard some presentations before on our sanitary sewer system. But this is very timely, as Tim pointed out, because we did open bids very recently for a very large CCTV contract. So just wanted to give you an opportunity to have some background on this topic and also ask some questions. So we'll move forward with, let's see. How do I get? There it goes. So some terms that many of you have heard probably over time, just want to run through a few things just for clarity. GIS, a lot of you know, we have a geographic information system that incorporates basically digital maps and databases. It's a very intelligent system that links spatial information to a background database. And we put information into that system using our GPS Global Positioning System. We have both mapping-grade and survey-grade units that can collect very accurate field data. And that's how we update our system along with our construction plans. CCTV, closed-circuit television, that's what's used to view the inside of the pipes. It's some high-tech equipment that goes inside the sewer pipes and gives us a good picture of what's going on inside. The NASCO, that's National Association of Sewer Service Companies. They're important because they developed the PACP, the Pipeline Assessment Certification Program. And that's used to rate the pipes, the defects in the pipes. And that's a national system that everybody understands. And so when we bid a CCTV contract, the contractors that bid on that know that, and their operators are trained to use that system. So it's a uniform system for rating pipe defects. CIPP, a cast-and-place pipeliner. After we figure out where there's problems in our sewer system, sometimes a rehabilitation method that is commonly used here is the cast-and-place liners. And we've been doing that for several years here quite effectively. Something that many of you are familiar with, the Illinois EPA, IEPA, is a regulatory agency that we report to on our sewer systems. Our sewer system is permitted through them and what they call the NPDES, the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System. So we have permits to operate what we call the CSOs, and that's coming up. We also have permits for MS4. We also have what is known as a Capacity Management and Operations and Maintenance Plan. It's called CMOM. This is a requirement of agencies now. It formalizes the things that we were doing all along, but actually puts it down on paper that the EPA and others can see what we're doing to maintain our system and manage the flows. CSO, some of you have heard that, combined sewer overflow. A combined sewer is one that carries not only sanitary flow, but also the storm flows. And in the older parts of Bloomington, quite often, we have combination sewers. And we had, years ago, when I first started, we had a number of CSOs, but we were basically down to two locations, the Locust Colton CSO and the Mazefield CSOs. And at each location, there's multiple CSOs, but it's all part of the same system. And so those are the only two sewer overflows that are left that are permitted by the EPA for the city. And we're working to eliminate the Locust Colton CSO. And then after that, we'll work on the Mazefield CSO. But there are other CSOs that are owned and operated by the Bloomington Normal Water Reclamation District, and those are more on the trunk lines that feed the wastewater treatment plants. And then we have SSOs, which are sanitary sewer overflows. And those really shouldn't happen in a sanitary sewer system. But occasionally, we get that from severe wet weather conditions. So we'll talk about that a little bit later, but it ought to be helpful to understand the terms of what we're talking about here. For assessment and rehabilitation, those are really the two keys. The first thing is you got to know what you have and what the condition is of it. And so one of the basic ways to do that is with the CCTV system. There's other ways, including doing flow monitors and studies and stuff that can analyze systems, but they don't really necessarily show you the condition of the pipe on the inside. And then there's the rehabilitation aspect, which we use quite a bit of the CIPP. And in some cases, spot repairs as well. And spot repairs tend to be more expensive. But obviously, the best practice here is to fix the infrastructure underground before you do roadwork. And you can kind of compare that to like an old building. You know, inside the walls, you have old plumbing. And if you're going to rehab an old building, you want to fix the stuff inside the walls before you put up new walls or a new floor. You want to fix everything underneath it. Same type of idea with the sewers underground. We want to get those in good working order before we resurface a street or, you know, make surface repairs. Because obviously, if you have to dig up something you just fixed, then there's more cost involved, so. Also wanted to mention that another, beside, on the asset management side, another aspect is what they call SSES, which is Sanitary Sewer Rehabilitation Study. And that includes some INI, which is Influent Infiltration Monitoring and also modeling that can be done. And we had some of that done with our sewer and stormwater master plan that started back in around 2011 and was finished in around 2014. So kind of a quick overview of that. The sanitary sewer assessment, like I said, the CCTV, this is an example of video and pictures that you can get out of the video that show a service connection into a pipe. And it kind of was a break-in connection that also damaged the pipe and has a potential now for creating a sinkhole in the street because some of the earth is exposed in behind it. And over time, that will get worse. And so when we find these, we try to get them fixed in a reasonable timeframe. One thing you don't ever know when you look at these is how critical, exactly how critical it is. Will this stay in this state for a year, for five years, for 10 years? We don't necessarily know that, but we know that if we have defects, we can prioritize which ones we take care of first and so forth, so. With the CCTV analysis, the operator is running the camera remotely. And the operator, if he sees something really bad, can notify us right away that, hey, this is an imminent failure, or we have a partial collapse or a partial blockage, and maybe that has to be dug immediately. But in most cases, that doesn't have to be done immediately, but needs to be prioritized with other needs in the sewer system. And these defects, like I said, are rated using the PACP method. And then we can prioritize those lines based on the number of defects and the severity of the defects in those pipes. The CCTV process, it also includes a light cleaning. So the CCTV truck, the panel van goes out along with a vector truck. And the vector is used to jet, with jetters, to clean out the pipe and remove debris. But if there's really heavy deposits inside the pipe, it may need what is called heavy cleaning. And sometimes there are calcium buildsups and other mineral builds up, build up inside the pipe that is really hard, and that may require heavy cleaning to get that out of the pipe. We pay for that with a CCTV contract as an extra per foot cost. And then also for root cutting, quite often, in certain parts of Bloomington, we'll find roots in the sewer lines as well. And that's paid separately as well. And then, of course, with the camera inside the pipe, quite often, we can identify where there's perhaps buried manholes that we couldn't find. And so we'll uncover those and collect with the GPS information about where those are at and try to bring them to the surface that we can find them in the future for maintenance. The council recently approved in March 26th meeting, software purchase 50,000 for windcan software. And that's an upgraded system for us to store this information and have access to the videos and the data. And it has links then into the GIS, and this will make it easier to manage the data. The old system was a pipe tech, but this new system is more compatible with what the different contractors use in the field. And they can just hand us their database, and we can import it along with the videos then. For the assessment and sewer and rehabilitation aspects, this year, in the past, we've done a little bit of both, but this year in FY '21, we're really focused on the assessment part. And so we had budgeted a significant amount of money in the sewer budget for CCTV contract this year. And we were very fortunate that on May 5th at 1:30, we had a bid opening at City Hall. And we had four bidders, and we livestreamed that. It's a different way of us doing business, but it works. And we analyzed the bids, and we'll have something for you on the May 26th agenda to consider for awarding a contract just under $1.9 million. And, you know, that's really important because we want to get a good assessment of our sewer system as a baseline. And this, you know, the CMOM that I talked about, that plan suggests that we ought to try to assess all our sewers and our sanitary and combination sewers, at least on a 10-year repeating basis, so that we can keep better tabs on what's going on with our sewers. Once we get this big assessment done this year, we'll have a better idea of how to prioritize the rehabilitation work that needs to be done, and we'll start focusing on that more in future years. But our goal is to continue to budget on an annual basis to do about 1/10 of our system with a CCTV update about once, you know, every 10 years, like I said. This is a map that shows the areas that were planned for televising. The different colors indicate some bid alternates. We did not know exactly how the pricing would come in. And I can say that we're very, very pleased and very fortunate to get some really good prices, and we're able to do all the colored lines that you see on the city map. It's a very significant area. It covers roughly 189 miles of sewer that will be cleaned and televised. And the bids, like a lot of our Public Works engineering contracts are bid with unit prices. So what that means is that we bid per foot cost for televising an 8-inch sewer, or a 12-inch sewer, or 30-inch sewer. And with those unit costs, then we can adjust as we go. If there's other parts of Bloomington that we need to prioritize some televising in, we can have the contractor move over there because we have unit prices for all these different sizes of pipe. But we needed to start somewhere, and the lines that are identified are ones that have not been televised recently. And so, like I said, this gets us about 189 miles of sewer that will be cleaned and televised. What that means is that out of a sewer system of roughly 335 miles of sanitary and combined sewer, we've already televised since 2012 with the smaller contracts, we've already televised about 55 miles. So by the time we're done with this contract, we'll have roughly 75% of the city's public sewer system televised within the last nine years. So that's a big milestone to get that much done. Also on the map, some of the gray lines, there are some sewers that the city doesn't own, some private, but also some interceptor sewers that the Bloomington Normal Water Reclamation District owns. And there's also some, a few town and normal sewers that run through Bloomington. The vast majority that you see on the map is our sewers in Bloomington, although the ones north of Division Street that you can see in normal are not ours, so. But that kind of gives you an overview of how significant this contract is. Some of the results from the CCTV contracts that we've had in the past, you can see some, you know, kind of bad-looking pictures here where there's been different defects that have been found. Sometimes there's, you know, a directional bore pipe that ended up getting through our sewer system. And other times, just bad construction with services or some other defect has caused a problem. But you can see that the CCTV is very effective at identifying problems in the sewer pipe and getting a reasonable assessment of what it's going to take to fix that. Like I said, a lot of our rehabilitation fixes are CIPP. That liner that goes in is really kind of a sock. It's a fabric material that is coated in a resin. And as that is threaded through the pipe and inflated with air and steam bath, it then cures out under the heat and pressure. It cures out to the shape of the pipe and forms basically a pipe inside pipe. And that pipe is structural on its own. It doesn't need the host pipe necessarily anymore. And, you know, is a, what we'd consider, you know, a pretty permanent fix for a lot of our sewers. There's also point repairs we can do as part of the rehabilitation process. Sometimes we have to do digs. There's no way to fix it necessarily from inside the pipe with a liner. But the graphic here illustrates that the price for the digs is pretty expensive. The liners are much more cost-effective, and we use those where we can save money. And the most significant thing there is to try to get it at a point when, you know, before there is collapses and we have to do those more expensive digs. Another aspect with sewer rehabilitation is sometimes we find tree roots. And tree roots can be tackled in a few different ways. One is just to cut them out with a root cutter, but then they come back, and you have to repeat with the root cutter every so often. Another aspect is to line it, but that doesn't necessarily help when the tree roots are also coming through service connections. But then there's another strategy, which we use, is a Duke's Root Control, which is a foaming chemical that kill the tree roots inside the pipe, but doesn't harm the tree. And that treatment, once it's been passed its initial application, the initial two applications, it can be just reapplied every three years, and it'll maintain the sewer where it's clean and free from tree roots. So we have several tools in our toolbox, along with chemical grouting, which we tried recently. There's a number of ways that we can handle repairs. So we look at not just CIPP, but a gamut of tools to make the best repair for the situation. This is a graphic that shows the sewer lining since 2015. And this is the number of feet that have been lined each year. And in some years, you'll see that it shows much less lining than in other years. And part of that is, is we've made it a priority early on to line a lot of our brick sewers that were older and also in some disrepair. And the older brick sewers, they can be anywhere from 2-foot diameter to 6-foot diameter. And those bigger liners are very expensive. And so when we're doing that in certain years, we don't get as many feet of lining done as we would like with an 8-inch or 12-inch pipe. Moving on to kind of our, how we track stuff, I mentioned about the GIS, and that's today's world. But when I started with the city back in 1988, we didn't have a GIS tool. We didn't have a lot on computers. And this is an example of a map from 1946 of the sewer system in Bloomington. And it was something that was maintained for many years. And there's other examples of a system map like this, but that was kind of the tool of the day. And when you zoom in, you can see this is an area around Miller Park, not only showing the sewer line, but also showing contours, so you can kind of see the terrain and how things flow. But it didn't necessarily give you a lot of information about, you know, where the manholes are or the exact sizes of the line and some of that stuff. And this is kind of relevant because some of you are aware that we've had some issues with rains in the last, in April, late April and early May here with some flooding that's gone on in the Miller Park area. So, you know, that first rain, we're out there trying to find some of the lines. And you can see when you have maps like this, it doesn't give you a lot to go on. And, you know, we put stuff in the GIS, and this is what we can see today through the GIS. But a lot of the data in the GIS had been based on the prior maps and prior sewers. So, you know, where you see little manhole circles and the different color of lines now, those indicate that those lines have attributes. Not just in that dialogue box, you know, you can see that it's the materials VCP, that's vitrified clay pipe, and diameter is 12-inch and so forth, with manhole IDs and links to the construction plans. But we can symbolize on what type of line that is. So blue is sanitary sewer, or storm sewer, I mean. Green is the sanitary sewer. Yellow are drain tiles or sump pump drain lines. Red is forest mains, and pink are combination sewers. And so we use this as our main go-to when we're out in the field working on stuff. And as we find new information or better information, we go back to update it. But a lot of times, in some of these cases with the older sewers, we don't have that luxury. We haven't necessarily been in that line. And so like the line through Miller Park, if you click on that line and pull up the construction plan, this is what you get, which, you know, goes back. I wasn't able to find the year of this plan, but it's probably early 1900s. And basically, it just shows you the ground profile and the pipe, pipe profile, and a couple manholes that were supposed to be there, and it shows it all in a straight line, which it doesn't run in a straight line. So that's some of the challenges we have. And, you know, the big thing here with the CCTV contract is to be able to get in these lines, locate the buried manholes. We had three in the Miller Park area that were buried. And then that line had a bunch of tree roots in it. It had, in certain areas, it had more than 50% blockage of the pipe. So we were able with the So, uh, we were able with the contractor then to, uh, get that line cleaned out and get it lined already and, uh. Very thankful that they were able to get that done. Uh, but as we know from the storm this last weekend. Uh, that didn't solve the problem yet. That, that obviously was part of the problem, but not the entire story. There's more to the story. And, uh, a lot of times with the sewer systems and stuff, um, it, it's not just a, a, a simple, uh, this is the fix. Uh, it's sometimes more complicated. And so we, uh, you know, use these tools that are at disposal with contractors and also other consultants and other experts to. To try to find the best way to solve the problems in the most cost effective way, uh, that will also, uh, keep our assets good. For many years to come. And, and that's kind of our goal with this. And so, um. Uh, just to kind of wrap things up here real quick, um. Like I say, uh, those recent rains in April and May, uh, have shown with a lot of calls of flooding in different areas and. And quite often the flooding is different, different issues. Sometimes it is a basement backup that was caused by the sewer main. But sometimes it's other problems with, um, you know, infiltration around a foundation wall. Or sump pumps that are overwhelmed or not working properly. Uh, sometimes it's, uh, uh, drainage. Around the, the home or the structure isn't graded well. Um, so important when the ground gets so saturated like this, water doesn't soak into the ground. It has to run off. And so. Very important that, uh, you know, our residents and our, our, uh, property owners. That the landscaping and fences should not block or divert flood routes where, where the drainage is designed to flow. You know, our, uh, our storm sewers, uh, they can, uh, sometimes get surcharged, which, which is fine because a storm sewer isn't going to back up in a basement. If it backs up on a road. That's a temporary thing that, uh, will, will take care of itself. Once the storm eases up. But, uh, you know, quite, some people don't understand that, uh. You know, you can always build a bigger pipe and there can always be a bigger storm. And so the, the engineers, when we designs infrastructure are trying to balance that. Where, uh, your, uh, inlets and pipes are not necessarily sized to take the runoff from every storm. They, they may get flooded for a while and then they'll catch up with things. Done, but the flood routes are so quickly important, uh, to maintain. Uh, and then, you know, there's other things that the residents can do to help us too with, um. You know, not flushing, uh, those flushable wipes down the drain. Some of you may have seen in the paper or heard the news stories, uh. Uh, a week or two ago about the, uh, backup in, uh, town normal. They had an ironwood pump station that backed up. And the pipe, uh, the pump was full of, uh, flushable wipes. We've had that occur in Bloomington as well. They also get caught on tree roots and, and build up. And the truth of the matter is those wipes end up all the way at the wastewater treatment plant where they have to be pulled out of that. Uh, waste stream anyway. So, uh, you know, that's just, uh. Some things that residents can help us with as well as, you know, not dumping grease down the drain because. Grease, uh, ends up solidifying and sticking to the walls of the pipes as well and eventually plugging that. Another thing is, uh, just manholes in, in yards. Uh, we have some sewers that run. Through people's backyards or front yards and those manholes are very critical for us when, uh. Somebody has a, uh, emergency and a, a backup in their basement. They want us to get there and figure out what's going on as soon as possible, but. Uh, sometimes, uh, people bury that landscaping or it's hidden under the landscaping because a bush grew over it. Uh, but these access points are critical, uh, for, uh, you know, our, our staff to be able to get in and, and fi- figure out what's going on. Um, and so, you know, uh, bottom line is we're working to resolve all these issues and. And the CCTV contract that's coming up, uh, for you next week, it's, it's a critical piece. For us to be able to assess this, uh, large amount of the city and prioritize the repairs and rehabilitation that needs to be done. And, uh, you know, we'll be able to update our GIS and be better equipped to handle, uh, this, the stuff going forward for budgeting. And also for prioritizing what needs to get done first. So I'll, uh, turn it back to, to you, mayor, and for questions and comments.
Thank you very much. Uh, I just want to say that, uh. Thank you for all of your work, hard work on this and all the staff and sewer videos may not be riveting. Reality TV shows, but nobody can say you've done a shitty job.
Thank you.
Bad, bad joke. I know. Okay. But you expect nothing less from me. Are there questions from the council, uh, or comments? And I'm going to turn to Madam Kirk because I can't see everybody.
Mayor, you do have Councilmember Boland with her hand up and also Councilmember Crable.
Let's start with Councilmember Boland and then Councilmember Crable. Thank you.
Well, I want to thank you for, um, the presentation and all the explanation. Um, I want, I. Want you to clarify, is the payment for this coming out of the enterprise home or enterprise fund for, uh, sewers?
Yes. So the, uh, the CCTV contract will be paid for out of the enterprise fund. Yes. And, uh. Go ahead.
Okay. The only thing I want to say, I'm gonna, I'm gonna call the mayor on the, on the rug on this. We've been talking for what? Six to eight weeks about public health. Without those sewers, there's a public health issue. So thank you very much for all the work that you do.
Thank you.
Okay, um. Uh, oh, oh, Councilmember, um, Crable?
Uh, thanks, Mayor. Uh, thanks for your presentation, uh, Kevin. Very, very thorough and I think I understood most of it. So. So I appreciate that. Uh, just a couple of quick follow-up questions. Um. I, I saw on the map that you showed in the, in the PowerPoint. It seemed like there was a big gray area between the, uh, was it the, the red or pink and the blue? I don't know if you can. You can bring that up. I, I've got it also on my. Yeah, like eighteen, twenty-six and thirty-three sections are right in the middle of the blue.
Okay, yeah.
And, and I guess, so those aren't going to get done in the next year or have they already been done?
Uh, there's a combination of, uh, stuff that's already been done. I think that, that big gray area you're talking about is actually mostly done already.
Gotcha, gotcha. Okay. Um, and. So when we actually do the, uh, CCT, CCTV, uh, work, um. Does that mean some of the, uh, pipes will need to be, um. Rehabilitated and some won't depending on their condition, right? It's not like everyone will need to get re, uh, rehabilitated.
That, that's correct. Yeah. I mean, it's really a, a way of, uh, you know. Getting a look inside our pipes, just like we rate our roads. Uh, you can't see, uh, inside the sewer without doing the CCTV work. So it's really. A way to get a baseline on all the sewers. And then, uh, you know, if we go back once every 10 years and look at them, we can see, you know, rates of deterioration and see if there's problems developing.
And one last question, uh, Kevin. Um, so I know we, we planned, uh, roadwork for, for twenty twenty-one and you had talked about. Um, you know, the goal of, of making sure all the stuff underneath, uh, is, is fixed. Uh, before we, uh, do resurfacing. So any concern of that, what, with what's underneath some of the roads that we're going to be doing, uh, for twenty twenty-one?
Yeah, excellent question. We, we try to be proactive. Uh, if, if we, uh, know that, uh, you know, streets are getting close to that point where they're likely to be resurfaced in the next few years. We try to get those sewers televised sooner or later so that we can, uh, get, uh, any repairs done ahead of time.
Great. All right. Thanks, Kevin.
Any other questions, Madam Kirk? I can't see.
Yeah, we have, uh, Councilmember Milowamway, Matthew and Black.
Okay, uh, let's do it in that order. Councilmember Milowamway, Matthew.
Okay. Thank you so much, Kevin, for your presentation and, and really putting it in, in words that I think, uh. Anybody can understand. So I know it's a very complex topic, but, uh, yet the presentation was, uh, simple enough for. Uh, most of us to understand. Um, my question, I, I know you, you stated that. You have, you would have seventy-five percent of the sewers televised, uh. If the, uh, if we pass the next, um, item next week. Um, so my question is, what is the plan for the other twenty-five percent that wouldn't be televised? Um, and then what do you, uh, anticipate would be. Uh, the length of time that we would need to, to get all of that work done? Cause I, you know, I'm, I'm kind of putting that in, in comparison to streets. Where we've had, um, a lot of streets assessed. And ratings and things like that, but yet, you know, it's taken us a while to catch up. So just basically wanting to know. What is the catch-up period that you think we'll have to go through?
That, that's an excellent question. We, uh, you know, in the past few years, we've been budgeting around, uh, four hundred thousand for CCTV work. If, if we go back, say, um. Three or four years ago, it was only maybe around two hundred thousand. So, uh, we want to be able to, like I say, we, what, once we get through, uh, this, then we'll have about twenty-five percent of the system left. Uh, we, we currently have programmed, I think, four hundred thousand in the out years for CCTV work. Uh, we may have to adjust that a little bit. Once we get through this and, and know what, uh. You know, we got a better idea of costs on a bigger contract. And so we'll, uh, we'll rebudget, uh, you know, next year. Uh, what we think is the right amount for being able to get through our system. Basically. Uh, one tenth of the system every year would be the goal because we'd like to be able to get through each line every, at least once every 10 years. So. That's going to be our, our target for budgeting so that we can keep up with a good assessment of our sewer and, or, or, um. You know, sanitary and combination sewers. Uh, and then, uh, you know, we'll have to also budget appropriate for our rehabilitation. So. It's really kind of a balance between getting through all the sewers like we need to as far as assessment. But it's also, uh, using that same enterprise funds for the rehabilitation. So, uh, we'll, we'll, uh. You know, as we move through the process, we'll have a better idea, uh, how that balances out. Uh, but I can't give you an exact timeframe of how soon we'll get the last twenty-five percent knocked out, but I would hope we could do that in the next several years.
Thank you, Kevin. Uh, is that all, Moboka?
Yes, that's it. Thank you.
Saitu. Uh, and it was, um. Alderman Black, was it Matthew?
Matthew and then Black.
Matthew and Black. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, thank you, Kevin. Um, and you know, I, uh. I, I thank you for actually speaking about the Miller Park area. Um, you know, that's how I started my day off yesterday was. I think I ended up with fourteen different residents that live in that area where their sewer was backing up through their drains. It wasn't actually leaking in from the foundation. There was a lot more of those too. Um, because it's an older part of town, but we had, I think I ended up with fourteen where they had actually backed up coming up through the sewer. Um, and I know we did the emergency work, uh, three or four weeks ago in Miller Park and we thought we had it solved and. And now we still have an issue. So I was looking at the map that you presented of what we were going to work on. Um, and I, the areas where people are having problems right now are Summit, Low, Mason, all around the Bissell Street area there. And those are not on the CCTV requirements list for this year. Have those been done recently also or, and I, or can you get me that answer? And if they haven't been done in the last few years. How do we put them on that list to find out where the problem is over there? Because we, you know, it's the same people that every time we have a hard rain. It's backing up into their houses and we just need to figure out for these folks, how do we fix this permanently? Um, it is probably somewhere in Miller Park, but you know, how do we make sure that that area, it's not somewhere more localized? You know, how do we provide them a level of assurance that, that their basement's not going to flood every time it rains?
No, and, and I appreciate that, uh, Alderman Matthew, because, uh. You, as, as I noted during the presentation with the unit prices we have, we can, uh. And, and we have the ability in our, uh, contract, the way the special provisions are written. That we can, uh, change where the contractor is going to do the CCTV work. So. We'll, uh, reprioritize some, um, you know, of the CCTV work to make sure that we cover everything in that. Uh, Southville neighborhood that is, um, you know, because one of, uh, my engineers, uh, came out with me on Sunday. We were out there. Uh, and, uh, when the contractor arrived and stuff and they were looking around, because while that event was going on. To try to get a, a good gauge of where, where to look next type of thing. And so, uh, we have some ideas and, uh. You know, part of that is, uh, like you said, getting that CCTV, C, CCTV assessment. Uh, because sometimes, uh. What we find is that the plumbing that's shown on our maps is maybe not exactly the plumbing that's in the field. You know, it's kind of like i- in an old house. You think that this is connected to that, but when you actually rip the wall open or whatever, investigate a little bit closer, you find out, oh, that's not how that's hooked up. This is hooked up over here. So. We think that that could be some of what's going on. So we definitely want to, uh, get, uh, target that area. Uh, and I appreciate your, your comments and, and sharing that information, uh, so that we could, uh, try to help and track, track this down and. Uh, dissect what the, like I said, sometimes the answer is not just a simple answer, but a ma- multifaceted problem.
Yeah, but as somebody who lives in a house from nineteen oh four, I understand that every time you open the walls, the price tag goes up about four times. Um, because you find new stuff you never knew was wrong each time. Um, and I just wanted to say, you know, thank you to staff. Uh, I know Colleen was out there, uh, in, at least in the conversations and Bob and. And other folks that were, it seems like every time this is an issue, it's a Sunday morning is when I seem to be blowing up ten cell phones. So. Um, thank you to everybody who was on site trying to get stuff done. You know, people are. Um, rightfully panicking when water is shooting up through their drains. So. Uh, I really appreciate that the work that you guys done and I appreciate this, um, you know. And I also appreciate, e- e- even in that neighborhood, we've had situations where, you know, we can't even tell sometimes where the property lines are. Because markers that were put in place a hundred years ago when they built stuff just aren't there anymore. So. Um, you know, when people say, how do you not know where the sewer lines are? I'm like, sometimes we have to hire surveyors just to tell where the property lines are because. Trees were planted or pins were put in the ground and that stuff is gone. It's been a hundred years plus. So. Um, you know, finding this stuff is definitely a priority and getting it fixed. And so thank you for bringing this forward. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilmember Black?
Thank you. Uh, and thank you, Kevin. Um, one of the hot topics that's, uh, kind of been. Kind of rises and falls over the years is wildcat sewers. Um, can you talk a little bit about what happens when you encounter a wildcat sewer and? And, and maybe, uh, if you, if you wouldn't mind defining it, uh, for the public, if this is their first time watching a conversation about this.
Okay, yeah, the, uh, uh. Rather call them like exclusive private sewers, but, uh. The, the wildcat term has been thrown out there as well. Uh, you know, i- i- you gotta look back at history, right? Uh. You know, the, uh, modern wastewater treatment plant, you know, that just celebrated a hundred years, you know, the West Oakland Avenue plant. Uh, that, that's nineteen nineteen, right? So, uh, we have sewers that go back before wastewater treatment plant. So. You know, the, the, the perspective is, is that those old parts of town, uh, you know, uh, people that were rather wealthy sometimes or had the resources. They would build their own sewer. They wouldn't, wouldn't wait for the city because, uh, you know, prior to the nineteen seventies. Uh, the way sewers and roads and water mains were built was, uh, the, uh, the people that benefited from that infrastructure. Uh, paid it on their property tax bills. You know, it was actually, uh. A board, a board of public improvements that would approve that. The council would approve it. It'd go into the courts. It would get added to their property tax bills. Uh, some people didn't want to wait for the city to get there or whatever. Uh, or said, well, we can do it cheaper ourselves and they would build their own private sewer. We have no idea how that's hooked up. It's hooked into our system in some, some way, shape or form. But in some cases, there's multiple houses tied to it. Uh, we ran into one of these, um, over at, uh, uh, Twanda and Country Club years ago. Uh, there's some, uh, homes on Jefferson Street. And as it turns out, we, we dug into our records and found out there was an old farmhouse. Uh, that had a big estate up there before the country club even existed as a country club. And, and they had built and tied into the sewer that was, uh, uh, there at, at, at Monroe because, uh. Or at, uh, yeah, Jefferson and Monroe and Country Club, that area out there, you know, there's some large homes that grew out pretty far east. Well, this farmhouse, they, they ran a three hundred foot private sewer back there and there, there were several homes tied to it. Even though there was a sewer out in front in the street, that sewer, that public sewer was built much later. And so when these people started having problems, we had no idea that. You were ran out of the back of the house and tied with the house next door and one behind it. Um, and so those are the wildcat sewers, we call them, and we just don't have record of them. Uh, and, and unfortunately we just, uh, you know. We've, uh, mapped our GPOS and identified homes that have no apparent public sewer in front of them, but yet. These people flush the toilet, it goes down the drain and it's not going into a septic tank. It's going, you know, into the city sewer system, but. It could be a few feet away where eyes in. And so, uh, we're still working to identify those as we find them, but takes a lot of technical work.
So i- in the case, and thank you. Um, so in the case that you do find one, as we go through our normal process, we're informing the homeowner, the property owner, I would imagine?
Yeah, a lot of times, uh, they, they surface because of somebody having a, uh, a problem. Uh, you know. For instance, there was, there was one, uh, not too long ago on, uh, uh, Empire, just west of Clinton, between Fell and Clinton. There was, uh, two homes that were tied together. And their sewer ran between two homes all the way out to, to, uh. Clinton, even though there was a sewer over by Fell and on Empire as well. And, and, uh, you know, just these oddball things that. That it really, you know, everybody doesn't think about the underground stuff until it doesn't work. And then when it's backing up, then everybody's in a panic and, and concerned about it. And then when it's backing up, then everybody's in a panic and and concerned about it, but.
Yeah, I guess so. So, so I just, at a, at a high level, we've talked about this before. I, I, a lot of times what happens is somebody's not aware of this until it becomes an issue and then they're, they're stuck with a bill. You know, if you have a, say, a, a house that was built in the early nineteen hundreds and everything's worked fine until there's some sort of an issue and we have no record of it, they would have no record of it. You know, I, I would advocate that the city should have a fund that's available to take care of those types of issues, especially if we're going through and finding these. So we're not, it's not coming to light, um, when there's a major issue going on. And and this has been a perennial topic, uh, at least in my tenure here on council. And I know there was some opposition in the past to, to creating a fund to handle that. Um, but I, I really would love to see how other communities handle this type of an issue because this isn't going away. And the more we map this out, especially in our historic core, the more of these we're going to find, the more we have to let homeowners know that this is what's going on with, within their sewer. Uh, because nobody cares as long as the toilet flushes, but once it stops, uh, my phone's off the hook, Tim's off the hook, and then yours is off the hook. So, uh, the, the more proactive we can be about that, uh, the better.
Yeah, and and we have, uh, tried to budget, uh, over time for doing a, a sewer here or a sewer there. We, a lot of you will remember, uh, the most recent ones were on, uh, Grove and Olive, just east of City Hall. We, uh, installed some public sewers there because, uh, the sewers like on some of those homes on Grove ran all the way through their backyard, all the way to Olive Street and and tie and didn't tie into a public sewer. They, they, once again, was a wildcat sewers and stuff.
And what I would say is just in the past, I remember there was a conversation around building an extension of a sewer line for homes that had not been yet built. Um, and to me, I would rather spend that money prioritized on homes where people actually live and there, this isn't their fault that this happened. Uh, they weren't around in nineteen tens when those folks made the decision. So, um, from a priority perspective, I think that's where the city should be placing its, its, its funding to help folks in that situation because it's, it's frankly, you know, that's, that's the basics of what we provide.
Thank you. Thanks, Scott. I think that, well, wildcat sewers, whatever we want to call them, uh, has definitely been an issue, as you say, since we were both elected and and before, but but certainly something we've heard about. Uh, Madam Cork, do you see anybody else's hand up?
We do. We have council member Painter, Emig, or council members, Painter, Emig and Bowlin.
Okay, and if we go too long here, we may have to extend our, our time because we're getting toward the end of that. Uh, the, the Emig, I'm sorry, that was, who?
Painter, Emig and Bowlin.
Oh, Painter. All the women, Painter, go ahead and start, then Emig and then Bowlin. Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you, Kevin, for this report. Um, I was just curious about the areas of town that still have septic tanks. Um, are there any plans to ever replace those or can they just keep them?
That's, that's a great question and, uh, you know, uh, we've, we've gone both ways with, uh, some things in that nature. As, as you're aware, with, uh, Country Club is a, a famous area for, uh, septics and and, uh, not having city sewers. And, uh, I think it, uh, comes down to what is acceptable with, uh, McLean County, uh, you know, Health Department because they are the ones who regulate the sewers. Uh, and then also, you know, the, uh, EPA and the state regulations, uh, there's some guidance there as far as, uh, if, if there is a public sewer, sewer available right next to you that you need to hook to it type of thing. But, uh, in certain cases, like in Country Club, uh, you know, we figured, uh, to run public sewer to all those lots, uh, the, the cost per lot would be probably over fifty thousand dollars a lot to get public sewer to them. And in those cases, you know, a lot of those lots are, uh, you know, half acre to an acre or bigger and can support a septic system. But in the core of Bloomington, where you have smaller lots, not likely to be able to support a septic system. So, uh, in some cases, like East Oakland, Country, uh, the, or Sunset areas, uh, those, there are some blocks that may just, uh, be on septic, uh, for the foreseeable future because the cost of public sewer is just so high to get to there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next, Councilmember Emig and then Bowlin.
Um, thank you, Mayor, and thanks, thank you for the presentation, Kevin. Um, well, Alderman Black did bring up wildcat sewers, so I just had to follow up. Um, I just wondered if it, the televised review of the sewer lines, if we will have a much better sense as well of where these wildcat sewers exist so that we have a, a, you know, a bigger idea of how we might proceed. And, um, I was really intrigued by the cast in place liners. The, the, that was, even though you said they've been around for several years, that, that's, um, that's new to me. And if I'm hearing you right, it sounds as if they, they are much cheaper and extend the life of a sewer pretty significantly. Um, so we're, we're really not, i- in the end, once we figure out what's going on underneath our streets, if we use that technology, we're going to, um, we're not going to have to replace whole sewers, which, which is, I just want to clarify that. And and finally, um, if you could just describe a little bit, you mentioned Sunset. Is, is the, is the issue on Sunset Road also that they have this separate sewer system, a wildcat system that needs to be upgraded or developed and hence the push forward to, um, to, you know, resurface that road once it gets torn up to upgrade? Because I, as you can imagine, I, a lot of constituents in Ward Four are asking, hey, please fix our roads and why are you fixing Sunset? It, it looks fine and and we, we really need help. So thank you for clarifying that.
Yes, so, you know, part of the thing with Sunset is, is that there's a, uh, a s- a small substandard water main on that road that has, uh, water quality issues and also fire flow issues. So the water main is getting upgraded, but there's no, no plans to install the sanitary sewer system out there because the, uh, like I said, the, the, the cost to get a sanitary sewer system to serve all the lots and, and Sunset is going to be very expensive. And, uh, with the larger lots, the septics work fine. So, uh, you know, some of the homes that back up to Ewing Park have access to a public sewer and have tied on back there. But a good number of the homes through, uh, Sun Sunset just don't have that access. So, um, that, that's where we made the, the decision that, uh, it doesn't make cost effective sense to, to switch that. You know, but, but, uh, you know, certainly with, you know, wildcat sewers, uh, we would like to know where they all are. Uh, but the truth of the matter is, is that the CCTV work we're going to be doing, uh, will likely not identify them all. And and what I mean by that is that, uh, when we do the liners in some of the older parts of town, uh, we have found, uh, sometimes as many as two or three services per lot or per home. Or, uh, you know, i- i- years ago, uh, there were some subdivisions that were done where they split the lots into twenty five foot frontages. And then later on, somebody would buy like two or three or four lots together and sometimes there'd be extra sewer services left and they would not be used then. And so, uh, it's hard to discern, uh, without doing what we call lateral launch. There's, there's another technology. I didn't want to necessarily make the presentation too long for you tonight. But, uh, lateral launch technology, uh, is, uh, in, instead of just the camera going through the main sewer, the, the sewer main, there's actually a, a little, uh, hose reel in there almost that can shoot off to the side. You can actually go up somebody's service to a, to a certain distance. And, uh, we use that technology sometimes when we're lining because we, you know, when, when you line and you, so let's say you have ten homes on a, on a sewer on a street, but you have twenty services. Well, why would you open up the other ten services that aren't in use? Because that just is a potential liability, uh, to the city because the service can, can fail. And then, uh, you get a sinkhole in the sidewalk or a sinkhole in the street because that service failed. If the service isn't opened up, it's not going to fail. So we use the lateral launch technology to help figure out which is the active service that's being used by this home and then not open up the ones that, um, that aren't needed. Uh, and so, uh, with that, we also can sometimes, uh, identify the, uh, wildcat sewers. Uh, we found one the hard way, uh, uh, occasionally we'll, we'll find these the hard way. And the, the reason, uh, like, uh, in, in the Country Club area with, uh, Locust Colton Phase One project, we found two of them, uh, because at that time we weren't using lateral launch technology. It was fairly new. And, uh, we didn't open up a sewer service and come to find out that was another one that ran up to Jefferson Street from Country Club. Um, so this, this other technology helps us, uh, um, you know, as, as technology changes. Like I say, when I started with the city in nineteen eighty eight, we had no GIS. We didn't have the ability to do these cameras the way we can today or store the videos. Uh, back, uh, you know, when I started, we were, uh, when we first got a sewer truck, we were storing the videos on VHS tape. So some of you are old enough, you remember VHS tapes. So, yeah.
And I remember when that was new. So anyway, thank you very much. We have one last, uh, uh, I'm, I'm going to stretch the rules here a little bit and we'll go beyond our, our bought a lot of time. Uh, Councilmember Bowlin has questions.
Yeah, this is real short. I'm gonna bounce off, um, Alderman Scott's comment about a, a fund. Could you briefly explain tap on fees and how that would affect or interact with setting up a fund to address older sewers ra- rather than putting the money into newer sewers?
Yeah, uh, tap on fees are, are, are normally charged for, uh, the cost of providing infrastructure. So like I said before, in, in the older days, uh, the people that benefited from that sewer paid for it on their property taxes. Tap on fees are kind of the, the more modern way of handling that. So when there is a new development, uh, whether it's the Grove out east or, you know, just pick a subdivision, Harvest Point or whatever, uh, tap on fees are paid by the developer for extending the public infrastructure, uh, to handle all that. And so quite often the city pays oversizing. And and when we pay oversizing, we recover that oversizing cost with tap on fees. So th- those are really kind of two different things, uh.
Okay.
When, when we look at, uh, people in the core of Bloomington, let's say they are on a wildcat sewer and have been that way for a hundred years. The, the way I look at it is they're, they're paying into the, uh, you know, the sewer system for us to maintain it. Uh, and if there is no public infrastructure there, what's the difference between, you know, adding in public infrastructure to provide them the proper sewer versus, uh, you know, rehabbing a line and doing point repairs on an older line? Uh, to me, it's all part of the, uh, system costs that they're, you know, paying for with their monthly bill.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this point.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Move on. I have one more thing and I promise Kevin will like what I say.
Okay, uh, we need to be quick because we're beyond time. Go ahead.
So Kevin, one of the questions that I get on a regular basis is why is Public Works not cleaning out all the sewer intakes? Um, all around town? And every time I get that question, I reply to people, if you've got your rake with you, just poke the leaves through in the rake. But then that also goes back to the thing we say all the time that says, stop raking your lawn clippings and your leaves into the street. Leave them in the parkway so that we can come pick them up because that's what ends up clogging up all of our sewer grates is the leaves and the lawn clipping. So one, everybody, just go clean out the one that's by your house. It takes like ten seconds, clean it out. And two, stop putting your lawn clippings in your leaves on the street. So there, all right, I'm done.
Thank you.
Jamie, well said. Thank you, everybody. Uh, at this point, there's, uh, we can move right along to the council initiatives. And, uh, I did it in discussion with, uh, the clerk and indirectly then through Mr. Jurgens. Um, the way that we handle these will be, again, we have, uh, three minutes to the presenter, three minutes to basically just, we'll all give like maybe a sentence or two in our position, but then we will actually have a, a vote as up or down rather than my interpretation of what you have said as yes or no. So, uh, Madam, I'll, I will ask Madam Clerk after our, uh, council basically go around, again, be as succinct as you can. You, you don't have to say anything other than yes, no. You're going to have to say yes, no until we ask the roll call. But, uh, so we can get through these as quick as possible. The first is consideration under BI, consideration and action on a council initiative submitted by Councilmember Matthew to change or extend the hours of operation for parking enforcement in downtown Bloomington as requested by Jamie Matthew. And I'm going to go ahead and turn this over to, uh, Jamie for three minutes. And then, again, remember, we all have a sentence or two, uh, at most to follow up. Jamie, you got the floor.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, appreciate that. So it's no secret to anybody that I have been a proponent of a long time thinking that we need to make all the parking garages in downtown free and put parking meters, um, up, up on the streets so that employees and residents go into the garages and then the meters, we use those for citizen convenience and they can be subsidized by the businesses in front of them. However, I've been told by people that they think that that is too drastic of a first step and they would, the, the constant suggestion I get is, can't we look at changing the enforcement hours as a first step to see if that makes a difference in the problem that we have? So this initiative would be to do a review of the hours of enforcement that we have in place right now. Um, and, you know, I think that we're going to see that those hours, most of them, we don't actually have a parking problem. The parking situations that we have start later in the day. As more residents move into downtown Bloomington, they get off work, they come home, they sit and put their car in a parking spot and they stay there for the rest of the day, which means there's no spots available for customers of the businesses. So, um, this initiative would look at shifting those hours. Um, I don't think we need any additional staff because we already have staff. We would just stagger the staff of when they work, their start times, right? This, a swing shift, the same that almost all small businesses do, you stagger your employees to cover the shifts that you need. Um, and so the next step on this in my imagination is we would, um, we would get some staff time to evaluate what this looks like. And if I'm wrong and there is other impacts, cost impacts, bring those forward and we can have a conversation about it. Also realizing that anything that we talk about today, the soonest is going to come back in front of us is probably going to be ninety days. So right now, there's obviously not a situation with COVID nineteen for parking. But we've had this situation ongoing for years. This is to get the conversation started about how do we have a potential fix for later this fall into the winter time.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Matthew. And I'm going to go ahead and start and to just to say thank you. Uh, I, as Mayor, I would be, uh, very happy to sign, uh, a council approval for this initiative. And I'm, uh, grateful for Councilmember Matthew bringing this forward, uh, you know, for us to go on to this. So I'm going to start, uh, with, uh, Councilmember Matthew. I'm assuming you're in favor of your own proposal. Ward one, and, oh, actually, no, I, I'm supposed to turn to, uh, the, uh, oh, no, I'm sorry, flipping this. Real quick comments, Councilmember Matthew. You're in favor. Okay, Council, uh, uh, Ward two, Councilmember Bowlin.
Yes, I defer to council, my, my Matthew and Emig and Carrillo, they're the ones that are downtown and whatever they say, I'm gonna go along with it.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Moloamwe, Ward three.
Yes, I am, I'm open to a review, although I'm not necessarily married to a particular solution.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember, uh, Emig, Ward four.
Yes, I support the initiative.
Okay, Councilmember, uh, Painter, Ward five.
Um, well, I, I will go along with it with a caveat. Um, I would like the business owners to be told to make sure that they are in favor of this because I have not once heard a complaint about this, but I have heard plenty of complaints about the, uh, people that pass out tickets, skulking around and, uh, scaring off their patrons. So, you know, I'm very happy that he moved it back to six thirty because that would give, uh, people that go down there on First Friday, uh, a chance to get down there at five and they could stay there for the evening. But I, you know, I don't want the business owners to be going bananas over this either, so please check with them. Thank you.
Councilmember Cady, Ward six.
Uh, I'm not totally sure about this, but I am interested in seeing it go forward and do a discussion.
Okay, okay. Uh, Councilmember Black, Ward seven.
Yes, on both counts, the first part about the free parking in the garage and paid parking on the street and two extended hours, yes.
Okay, uh, and Councilmember Cravill, Ward eight.
Uh, I support the initiative.
Thank you. Councilmember, uh, Bray, Ward nine.
Uh, yes, I support this initiative, learning more about this. And I'd like to also know, um, how this would affect, um, employee costs for our, I guess, would be our police officers that would be writing these tickets. I mean, what, what is the cost going to be to us to do additional enforcement for these hours? And then number two, I'd also like to know what effect it will have on the parking around the, um, BCPA and the arena if, when we get back to having events, um, because I know right now some of those spots are, are used for parking, um, that, because there's not enforcement. So anyway, that, yes, I'm, I'm.
Yes, but more, more information. Got you. And then just on that, uh, I, as in a side note, very, very quickly, because, uh, I know we're, uh, moving forward. I, about five years ago, I had a conversation similar to this with, uh, for, for some parking issues. And Tony Penn, who, uh, represents some of the labors, uh, said that the, uh, uh, the labor unions who are involved, you know, and represent the people who enforce our parking downtown would be very willing to talk about staggered hours. Uh, so just FYI, at this point, Madam Cork, uh, well, actually, excuse me, we need a motion. Do we have a motion to deny? It sounds like not, not a motion to deny, but do we have a motion either to have this? But do we have a motion either to have this placed on a future council consented, or excuse me, a future council agenda? Or to have staff evaluate this and bring a proposed initiative? And just to clarify, even if you were to have it placed on a future agenda, we assume staff would be doing some of that anyway. But is there a motion by, and by Councilmember Painter, and was that to put this on an agenda? Okay, is there a second to the motion to put this on the agenda?
Oh, second.
Second by Councilmember Carrillo. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Matthew?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Milowamway, sorry?
Yes.
Councilmember Emig?
Yes.
Councilmember Painter?
Yes.
Councilmember Corrio?
Yes.
Councilmember Black?
Yes.
Councilmember Crable?
Yes.
Councilmember Bray?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to move on to the next item, number two. And this is also by Councilmember Matthew. Consideration of council action for, to bring the Downtown Task Force report back to the council for acceptance. And I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Matthew.
Thank you, Mayor. So as you could see, I was busy this week. This, the idea behind this one is that when we had the original Downtown Task Force presentation in two thousand and seventeen, there was a significant amount of controversy that came forward due to the catalyst section of the Task Force, which is Section Four. And that basically destroyed all additional conversation around the Task Force, at least in my opinion it did. And there was a lot of really good ideas inside of that Task Force that were definitely low-hanging fruit that we could still work on. But, you know, all the media attention and all the citizen attention went to that one section of the Task Force. So my idea of bringing this back forward is to start the conversation that we could either approve the Task Force, the remaining pieces of it. You know, the catalyst section is solved because the library is being built in place. We could either approve the Task Force and the remaining pieces of it, or at least we have the conversation about the remaining sections of it. And we can start picking apart and have conversations amongst ourselves to bring those other pieces forward and set some priorities for staff. So the the main concept on this one is to bring the Task Force report forward and pick out the parts that we can do quickly and easily. And also, we've got different council now, so we might have some different ideas from them. And we also have different staff with Kevin at Public Works and Bob in Community Development and Melissa Hahn in the economic development part. So we have new people that might have additional ideas to bring forward.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Matthew. And once again, I just want to say, as Mayor, I would be thrilled to sign this if the council approves this. I certainly wholeheartedly support this. Thank you for bringing this forward. I think the one piece that was the most controversial is really off the table at this point. And most of the Downtown Task Force, I thought, was really well done. The one controversial piece, as you noted, seemed to derail us. At this point, I'm going to go ahead and start. Councilmember Matthew, I'm assuming you support your own motion or your own initiative.
I do.
Ward two, I'm sorry.
Sorry, Mayor, to interrupt. Yeah, you do have Councilmember Bray and Councilmember Corrio with their hands up.
I don't, I think that's in order at this point. We're going to go around one through nine and everybody's going to be able to say what they have within a couple of seconds. So Councilmember Bowlin.
Well, I support the initiative in general and in theory, but I'm going to go back to my Strong Towns philosophy. I want to do clear direction to staff, low-cost investment with the biggest impact.
Okay.
So the idea of bringing it back regularly with looking things over, I think is a good idea.
Okay, Council, Councilmember Milowamway.
I would say yes, to the extent that it allows us to see what has been accomplished and what hasn't yet.
Okay.
So then we can go from there.
Okay, Councilmember Emig, Ward four.
Yes, I also support this initiative and I think it'll be really helpful to move some of these items forward.
Okay, Councilmember Painter, Ward five.
Yes, although, you know, I think to commit to something like this expensive at this point in time is probably not a good idea. But I think just looking at everything that they have done and considering it is fine. I actually have to say that this is one of the few reports that has been brought forward that our staff has actually taken quite seriously. I know that Melissa Hahn has looked at, you know, getting the trees wired for Christmas lights and things. And actually, she's come up with a number for how much it would cost to get started on this. And it's eight million dollars. So yes, I, I'm open to talking about it. But to just say, okay, we're going to do this and we're going to pay for this right now. I don't think that's a real good idea at this point in time, but I'm open to talking about it. Thank you.
Councilmember Carrillo, Ward six.
I just had a couple of questions. Is that in order right now?
No, we, it's just, you got like three sentences, yes, no.
Okay.
And then if you have questions, if this has support, we'll bring it back and then we'll have a full vetting.
Got it. Yeah, okay, I'm open to it.
Okay, Councilmember Crable, excuse me, Councilmember Black, Ward seven.
Yes.
Councilmember Crable, Ward eight.
I support the initiative.
Okay, Councilmember Bray, Ward nine.
Thank you, Mayor. And as an alderman who's served on this Downtown Task Force, I agree there are a lot of good ideas here. Structurally, I'd like for us to give staff some more guidance before they would start working on anything. So I'd like for us to unbundle some of this, maybe in some three-in-ones and maybe pick out some priorities like Section Two Public Spaces and Walkability and give staff some direction on which piece we'd like to hear back first. So I kind of like to take a structural approach. I don't think that we should adopt the report itself. It's stale, some things have already been done. And we have some new talent in our city that I'd really like to hear some of their ideas about some of these key touchstones.
Okay, all right. At this point, there are three options. And that is, again, have the initiative placed on a council agenda for further consideration. And obviously, that still would involve some staff direction. But the other would be to have the staff, before there's an actual initiative, evaluate and prepare an analysis or then to deny the initiative. Is there a motion for either of those three options on this proposal?
Mayor, you have Councilmember Milowamway with his hand up and it looks like Councilmember Bowlin also.
Okay, Councilmember Milowamway, do you have a motion?
Well, yes, a motion then a quick question.
Questions are, I'm sorry, it's, they're not in order under this. This is just, is there support? Do we put it on the agenda? And if so, how? So if you have an emotion, I'll take that.
Okay, okay, I will say yes, and then on a committee of the whole, maybe.
And are you asking, are you putting it on the agenda? Is that your motion?
I would say for committee of the whole meeting.
Okay, so to a discussion is what you're saying. Okay, not not put it on the agenda. Okay, is there a second to that? Second by Councilmember Bray, as I see. Okay, we have a motion and a second at this point. So the motion is not to bring it on as an agenda item yet, but to have staff prepare and evaluate an analysis of this. And Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Councilmember Matthew?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Milowamway?
Yes.
Councilmember Emig?
Yes.
Councilmember Painter?
Yes.
Councilmember Corrio?
Yes.
Councilmember Black?
Scott? Yes, did you hear me? Sorry, yes.
Councilmember Crable?
Yes.
Councilmember Bray?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries unanimously. No need to announce. We move on to the last item, also brought by Councilmember Matthew. And this is to consideration on a council initiative on waiving late fees on food and beverage taxes due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Councilmember Matthew, I'm going to turn this over to you for up to three minutes and then we're going to have, again, the same. I apologize if the way that this is done, it has to be very, very quick, couple sentences and yes, no when I get to you. Councilmember Matthew.
Thanks, Mayor. So this one, the idea behind this was, you know, we have already prorated liquor licenses and we waived some of the fees for video gambling terminals. This one more directly goes to helping our other small businesses, particularly hotels and restaurants, in that, you know, right now, we have already waived late fees for a period of thirty days after Governor Pritzker ends the state of emergency. And I think that we have businesses in town that might need a longer period of time in order to get caught up on all the various fees and taxes that they have. So I would like to look at, you know, waiving that and making that period where we're going to waive late fees longer than thirty days. I originally had suggested six months as, you know, there's no late fees. Taxes are still due, we're not waiving the taxes, but we're waiving late fees. So if businesses need longer and to get caught up and it's the difference between them paying our fees and keeping people employed, that's kind of the angle I was going for. Alderman Moamle and I talked earlier today, he said, well, maybe could we look at a shorter period than six months? Could we look at ninety days first and see what that looks like? And I am completely open to a shorter period than six months. But the idea is, let's do some evaluation to find out what it looks like for, we'll call it ninety days in six months. Let's get some staff evaluation to see what the impact of the city is if we only waive late fees on those taxes or fees that we would normally be due.
Okay, thank you. So just if I could clarify for everyone, you are supporting, in a sense, option two, have staff evaluate and bring an analysis of the proposed initiative back to further council discussion?
Yes.
So that's essentially what you're suggesting?
Yeah, I don't want to, I don't want to do something that's going to create some massive burden and it's going to actually cost a ton of money that gets passed on to other taxpayers. That's not the goal. The goal is to provide some
Some relief.
small amount of relief to our business community.
Okay, so, all right, at this point, we're going to have, I'll just do, since, in a sense, the proposal is option two, that's what I would ask you. And I would start with the Ward one. Alderman Matthew, I'm assuming, again, you're in favor of your own initiative.
I am indeed.
Okay, Councilmember Bowlin, Ward two.
Yes, I want to get some staff feedback on how this looks.
Okay, that's the proposal. Thank you for clarifying that. Ward three, Alderman Milowamway.
Yes.
Councilmember Emig, Ward four.
Yes.
Councilmember Painter, Ward five.
Yes.
Councilmember Carrillo, Ward six.
Yes.
Councilmember Black, Ward seven.
Yes.
Councilmember Crable, Ward eight.
Yes.
Councilmember Bray, Ward nine.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. And again, that is, just to clarify, have staff evaluate and bring an analysis of the proposed initiative. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to our city manager for his report. And again, just as everyone notes, we do not have an executive session. So I would assume everybody would be prepared for a motion to adjourn after Mr. Gleason has his final words. Mr. Gleason, come on down.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I do have a handful of items, but I'm going to roll through them pretty quick. Census twenty twenty, maybe a challenge to the community that we ask three friends and family if they've completed that and ask them to do the same thing. And if we did that, we'd whip through the community pretty quick. Very important, don't want to lose sight of the census that we're doing. Next council meeting is actually on a Tuesday night, Tuesday evening, May twenty-sixth because of Memorial Day. And then also wanted to share a couple of proclamations, although I'm not going to read them. That's what the mayor does during a council meeting. But last week, we had the Peace Officers Memorial Day and Police Week. This week, we're in Emergency Medical Services Week. And these proclamations can be found on the city website after, after this council meeting. And had Fire Chief Brian Moore and Police Chief Dan Donut on the call tonight just to represent the departments very much. Day in, day out, twenty-four seven, thank you for what the men and women do and especially amidst COVID-19. I mean, they're hitting it. They're doing exactly what they do under normal circumstances. And they're doing it now in all the protective gear and just all the concerns and everything. And they're doing a great job. So thank you, guys. Next item is agenda items that are coming up next week. We heard Public Works Director Kevin Coats' sanitary sewer assessment, maintenance, rehabilitation presentation. That is an agenda item for next Tuesday. And also, we have the twenty twenty to twenty twenty-four consolidated plan public hearing and then an action item after that from Jennifer Tony in Community Development. That was to be last week, but we postponed it until next week. And then also, another agenda item is East New Church has made a request for an alley vacation on Union Street so that they can expand some of the program offerings that they currently do. Then on a sad note, I want to share the loss of one of our city employees. Justin Gale was a Bloomington police officer. Lost his year-long, year-plus-long battle with cancer the other day. He made it home from the hospital to start hospice. And he made it home to his wife and his two teenage kids. And it's a tremendous loss to the Bloomington Police Department and obviously to the community. Thirteen-year veteran, was a third shifter, the better part of his career. And you'll have visitation tomorrow evening and then the funeral up in Hudson on Wednesday. So very sad, but wanted to share that with you, the elected. I know, I know you already knew about that, but more so for the community. And that's all I've got. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Again, just to clarify, we don't have an executive session and we don't have either mayoral or aldermanic comments. So is there a motion to adjourn?
I make that motion.
Very, very emphatic. By Councilmember Bowlin and I see Councilmember Bray giving a Nixon kind of victory thing or maybe that's a, oh, Churchill, okay. So second by Councilmember Bray, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carried, we are adjourned. Thank you all so much.
Happy birthday, Jen.
Oh, happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Jen.
Happy birthday.
One for the gray and the other on a banana peel.
Feliz cumpleaños.
Gracias.